Yeah, we are live.
Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
Acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the traditional land of the Anishna beg people. The Anishna beg include the Odawa, Ojibwe and Baduwa Tommy nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Ma'atii and Inuit people. You may be seated. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to a virtual City Council meeting, given the weather is anticipated to continue to deteriorate. Council is being held electronically tonight. Members of council, executive management, city clerk attending via video conference, as well as senior leadership team and city staff that are available to answer questions. Right off the top, the city Berry has declared a winter maintenance event to allow crews to clear the streets tonight. That means no on-street parking overnight. Please help us out. Help our crews out. On-street parking is prohibited tonight from 3 until 6 a.m. within the downtown BIA area and in the rest of the city from midnight to 7 a.m. For more information, you can visit berry.ca/snow. And even though that winter maintenance event's been declared, where it's evident that a storage container dumpster or other construction materials are occupying driveways to deal with tornado damage, staff will not be ticketing vehicles relative to parking overnight. So just to put minds at rest in the tornado impact zone, we will not be ticketing where where people's driveways are occupied because of the of the damage. The exception is for this evening, though, not all of winter. We are encouraging residents in that area to seek alternatives, but we'll take that as it comes over the coming weeks and months. Yeah, everything else we will do during announcements. And I will also just note off the top that we do have a couple of members of council whose power is out and in the interest of them being able to participate in the whole meeting on battery. They may turn their video off during the presentations tonight by the service partners and then bring them back on during the debate. But if you see a member of council with their camera off, which normally we do not do, it is because of that power situation and we'll hope it comes back on quickly. Okay, the first item on the agenda is confirmation of the minutes from the meeting held November 8th. The minutes of that City Council meeting have been circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are adopted as printed and circulated. We have no awards and recognition matters tonight. We do not have any reports from officers or deputation requests, but we do have a motion regarding tax applications. Deputy Mayor Ward, go ahead.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that the list of applications for cancellation, reduction or addition to taxes the council dated November 22nd, 2021 submitted by the Treasury in the amount of $291,677.94 be approved.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that the list of application for cancellation, reduction or additions to taxes to council dated November 22nd submitted by the Treasury in the amount of $291,677.94 be approved. Ms. Cook, have we received any objections to that list of application for cancellation, reduction or addition of taxes?
No, Mayor Lehman, we have not.
Mr. Miller, same question. Has the Treasury received any comments or objections?
No, we have not.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from members of council? I would note some of these do relate to tornado damage and that is an ongoing process and why we're seeing a few more of these application for reductions to taxes. Seeing none, I will take the vote. Those in favor are any opposed? None. That carries. Thank you very much. No communication matters tonight, so we'll move to the committee report. Deputy Mayor Ward, go ahead.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section A of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 are circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section A of the General Committee Report dated November 15th is circulated to be adopted. This is to adopt the items regarding Sunnydale Road overpass, the Berry Arts and Culture Investment Program and the investigation for no parking anytime on Gulfdale Road. Comments, questions or amendments? No? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of section A? Any opposed? None? Okay, that carries. Section B, please.
Myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section B of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section B of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted. This is the item regarding the Holland Marsh Polder Phosphorus Recycling Facility. Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Yeah, I'm just going to declare pecuniary interest in this matter as it does involve a major piece of infrastructure in the regional municipality of York where I am employed full-time. As a result, I won't participate in the vote or any discussion on this matter.
Thank you very much, councillor Harvey. Madam Clerk, has councillor Harvey's pecuniary interest been recorded?
Yes, Mayor Lehman, it has.
Thank you very much. Members of council, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, call the question. Those in favor of section B? Any opposed? None. That carries unanimously by those voting. Section C, please.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section C of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section C of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted. This is with regards to hurricane straps and financial assistance to the homeowners affected by the 2021 Barry tornado. Comments or questions on section C? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of section C, please indicate. Is anyone opposed? None. That carries unanimously. Thank you. Section D, please, deputy board.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section D of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be received.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section D of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be received. It's to receive the report from the confidential personal information matter. This was the appointments to the Active Transportation Sustainability Committee. Comments or questions? It's to be received. Those in favor, I'll call the question. Those in favor? Anybody opposed? None. That carries. Section E.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section E of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section E of the General Committee Report dated November 15th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted. This is with regards to appointments, the actual appointments to the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee to be adopted. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of section E, please indicate. Nobody opposed? That also carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Ward. And councillor Thompson. Okay, that moves us to direct motions. There's one direct motion this evening. With regards to support for the town of Innisville's application for a minister's zoning order. Councillor McCann, this was printed on the agenda. Do we need this to be read, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor Lehman.
Okay, it is as printed on the agenda. It's moved by councillor McCann and seconded by councillor Congle. It is to send correspondence on behalf of the City Council in support of the town of Innisville's request for a minister's zoning order to accelerate the development of RBH's future self-campus. Any comments or questions on the direct motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor, please indicate. And I'll indicate for the record I am as well. That carries unanimously.
Sorry, Jeff, I asked for a recorded vote. Didn't you hear me not?
Oh, no, we didn't hear you. It's, everybody did vote in favor, but we can, we can go through the process. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Councillor Harvey?
Yes.
Councillor Jim Harris?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Councillor Reema?
Yes.
Mayor Lehman?
Yes.
Councillor Congle?
Yes.
Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor McCann?
Yes.
Councillor Ailwyn?
Yes.
Councillor Morales?
Yes.
And councillor Natalie Harris?
Yes.
Vote carries unanimously.
That was fun. We went through that in Hollywood Squares fashion. I had been thinking we'd go in word order. That was good. Okay. All right. So everybody, of course, is on record in favor. Thank you very much. And that does bring us directly to our presentations, which is the substance of tonight's agenda. Thank you, members of council, for moving us along tonight. Tonight, we have our service partners and of course, for those watching at home, and I've been asked about this a few times today, the the service partners that present their budget are the three largest. There are many service partners for the city of Berry, but three that have much larger substantive budgets that relate to the services that they deliver, and that is the Berry Police, the Berry Public Library and the Cathy of Simcoe, who deliver a number of services through our service agreement. First up tonight will be the Berry Sali- uh, Sali's Berry Police Service, easy for me to say. So I'll call on Police Chief Kimberly Greenwood to provide the presentation. Councillor Natalie Harris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I just want to declare that I will not be participating in the vote. I'm going to turn off my video as well. I've spoken with the Integrity Commissioner. I don't have a pecuniary interest, but it is advised that I don't participate, so I'm going to do that now.
Well, okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, has councillor Harris's interest been recorded?
Yes, Mayor Lehman, it has.
Thank you very much, councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. In order to meet my statutory obligations under section 17 sub 3 of the Police Services Act, I will not be participating in the presentation and I'll turn my camera off during the presentation.
Good, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, has councillor Harvey's conflict been recorded?
Yes, Mayor Lehman, it has.
Okay, thank you very much. And I see we have board chair. Yes, we have the Police Services Board Chair with us. Welcome, sir, and we will hand the floor over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Lehman, Deputy Mayor Ward and members of council. My name is Greg Ferguson and I am the Chair of the Berry Police Services Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Berry Police Services 2022 Budget Requirements. The budget was repaired and guided by a number of key factors. The Services Strategic Business Plan, the requirements needed to fulfill our core policing responsibilities, public expectations, evidence-based delivery of police services and increasing financial pressures. Chief Kimberly Greenwood will present and discuss budgetary challenges expected in 2022, our operating and capital requirements and legislative impacts. Knowing that salaries and benefits amount for over 90% of the budget, Chief Greenwood will share a thorough look at our staffing plan. As the city of Berry continues to grow, as do the community's expectations of its police service, we believe this budget requirement balances fiscal constraints while at the same time meeting our obligations under the Police Services Act and the expectations of our community. In addition, we will highlight new initiatives discussing our involvement in the city of Berry's Community Safety and Well-being Plan, as well as introduce you to several of our members embedded in the important work being accomplished by the Berry Police Services. Chief Greenwood.
Thank you, Chair Ferguson. Thank you, Chair Ferguson. Good evening, Mayor Lehman, Deputy Ward and council members. Policing today brings many challenges that do not have simple solutions. The requirement to adapt, to change, never ceases and keeping up with fundamental changes takes financial commitment. Recently, Berry has experienced some very serious incidents that require a large police response with multiple resources. These incidents serve as good reminders while continued investment in our members and our service is so very important. In response to the North American events in the summer of 2020, the Berry Police Service conducted a systemic review of organization, culture and systems. After consultation with service members, external focus groups, internal surveys, third-party consultations and environmental scan of our policies, a report was completed containing more than 30 recommendations which are being implemented. We will highlight specific budget challenges for 2022 in detail as we move through the presentation. The service will increase our investment in information technology in 2022 by enhancing several areas. Everything from CCTV cameras to workstation computers and mobile data terminals, our 911 system and online reporting, body worn cameras and digital evidence management systems to our Microsoft Power Platform. Our new initiatives will be evidence-based, innovative and sustainable. With increased complexity and legal requirements for law enforcement in the judicial system, the case management unit pulled together expertise from across the organization to centralize the processing of all ground briefs, improving consistency and quality of documents. Justice modernization is tied closely to case management, but also includes ensuring appropriate IT infrastructure, pre-charge diversion and working towards a justice center. Evidence-based policing is not a specific initiative, but rather a framework that we apply to all of our programs. To help embed evidence-based practices in our organization, we have made a targeted investment in an educational program through Cambridge University Center for Evidence-Based Policing. We will be using evidence-based and data-driven deployment, such as high-harm hotspots in our community and conducted targeted, specific projects to help curb crime and increase overall community safety and well-being. We have numerous other initiatives underway and are very excited to assess their effectiveness. As of today, 110 frontline officers, traffic and tactical support members have received body-worn camera training and are actively deployed with them. Management of our captured images by the body-worn camera is a significant undertaking and resources will be continued to be dedicated to this responsibility. Body-worn cameras will provide a firsthand account of our interaction in the community, which will help to provide context and increase transparency in relation to our daily interactions with the public with whom we serve. The city of Berry's mandated Community Safety and Well-being Plan has created several obligations in the form of action items for our service. In 2022, we are planning an organization realignment to ensure adequate staffing to assist with the CSWB plan as well as maintain our core services. The plan is, has identified 15 action items that focus on local issues and guides organizations to work together in a new ways to create a safer and healthier city. We are committed lead or partner on 11 of those 15 actions. Many of the actions assigned to the Berry Police Service within the plan will work to address the root cause of crime and disorder. Some important projects discussed in the plan include strengthening the Collaborate Berry Situation Table, implementation of the Berry Health Accord and the development of the Community Justice Center and the Community Service Campus. We look forward to working with our community organizations on all of these projects. In January of this year, we realigned resources and created a Community Safety and Well-being Officer. Constable Brooks focuses on initiatives that promote public safety and crime prevention, develops partnerships, engages with the community and implements our services action plans under the Community Safety and Well-being Plan. Additionally, we merged resources to create the Community Safety and Well-being Unit. This unit, officers are mobilizing research and working with community partners to identify and address areas of high harm within the community. The new unit brings together several established initiatives such as Coast Collaborate Berry, Alternative Response Unit, all under one umbrella. One direction of this unit is centering on is high-harm policing. It begins with harm indexing, which assigns a weight to crime based on the impact of victims and the community. Relocation of resources and changing patrol patterns based on high-harm data is intended to reduce harm, reduce crimes committed and target social disorder. Therefore, once again, improving the overall wellness and safety of our community. The name given to our harm-focused deployment of resources is STAR, Strategic, Targeted and Research. We will continue to review alternate response opportunities to ensure that we are using staffing resources as effective and efficiently as possible. We are focusing on utilizing mental health researchers to help establish criteria to better direct mental health-related calls to more appropriate resources. Evolving our alternate response unit to reduce the use of on-world resources, including the expansion of an online porting, reporting options and exploring the option of a virtual police presence. We are also partnering with the Ministry of the Attorney General and the Elizabeth Fry Society in a pre-charge diversion program. In 2016, the Police Services Board approved a staffing plan which provides us with our authorized staffing members or our strength from 2017 to 2021. The service has worked diligently to ensure a slow and sustainable growth model utilizing civilianization and strategic gapping to help achieve this. For the current year of 2021, we needed to alter our course due to budget restraints. For 2022, our sworn complement, as authorized by the board, remains unchanged at 250. However, only 245 are funded with five positions being gapped. Our civilian component also remains changed at 123 authorized. However, only two positions will be gapped, three positions will be filled, organizational researcher, a business planner, case management coordinator. To summarize, our staffing numbers for 2022 are 241 or 45 sworn and 121 civilian members. These numbers continue to be lower than what was set in our approved staffing plan in 2021. We will now speak to some specific funding dollars required to deliver effective policing services to our growing community. The salaries, benefits and overtime component of our 2022 budget represents 94.3% of the overall budget. Incorporating strategic gapping, retirements and three new civilian positions, salaries, benefits and overtime amount to $53 million in 2022. The increase to salaries and benefit costs from 2022 from 2021 is only 0.5% or approximately $240,000. As a comparison, since 2016, salaries and benefits have increased on average $1.7 million from year to year. Without the impact of saving from our retirement incentive program we offered to members in 2021, the 2022 budget would have been an annual increase of 4.16%. Operating expenditures represents 9.3% of the total budget and shows an increase of just under 120, sorry, $920,000. Operating expenditures includes insurance, vehicle gasoline and maintenance, staff development, wellness initiatives, uniforms and equipment, operating supplies and technology infrastructure. In 2022, we will invest in our commitment to our members' wellness by enhancing our critical early intervention program. Additionally, to leverage our resources, we must move forward and continue to invest in available software and digital evidence management. The building budget represents 2.1% of the overall budget request for a total of $1.2 million. Building cost reflects proportional cost for the campus charged back by the city of Berry for things such as salary and benefits for our custodial staff, insurance, repairs, property maintenance and utilities for our three locations. An increase of $200,000 for building costs in 2022 is projected based on our actual cost experience to date for 2021. The final area of our operating budget is grants, secondments and other revenue. Total revenue and recovery for 2022 is $5.6 million. If you may recall, in 2018, all provincial-funded grants were reviewed and resulted in significant funding reductions. The 2022 budget in the amount of $3.5 million request illustrates that our grant funding for next year is 20% lower or $880,000 lower than the funding received prior to the 2018 change. The service encourages secondment opportunities and currently we have eight members that are working with external agencies. Recoveries from secondments will amount to $1.1 million in 2022. Our general revenue, which includes sale of our assets, criminal records check and pay duty administrative fees is slightly reduced by seven to the amount of $780,000. It is important to note, a one-time funding from the Health and Wellness Reserve will be used to offset a cost associated with the introduction of an early intervention psychological programs. Our development charge funding of $83,000 is the service's share of funding available to offset cost associated with the next-generation 911 project. Overall, the services grants, revenues and other recoveries has been reduced this year compared to last year by just over $300,000. Combining our salaries and benefits, operating expenditures, facility costs and subtracting our revenue, this requires a total operating budget for the Berry Police Service of $54.1 million. this requires a total operating budget for the Berry Police Service of fifty-four-point-one-million dollars. But as per the Police Services Act, the Police Services Board is required to submit an operating budget and a separate capital budget. Keeping in mind the budgetary restraints for 2022, a decision was made to reduce the transfer to our capital reserve to one-point-three-million dollars. Our 2022 capital items include the replacement of fleet vehicles, one being electronic vehicle, radio and specialized police equipment, information technology equipment. Additionally, the Berry Police Service will contribute to the City of Berry Astro Radio System upgrade in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. The transfer to the Capital Reserve and the City of Berry Radio System upgrade is one-point-six-million dollars. Very important to note, twelve years ago, 2010, our capital budget was one-point-six-million dollars. In addition to the operating and capital budgets, there are significant legislative requirements that have a direct impact on the service's budget request. As a Schedule II employer, WSAB claims have a significant impact to our service. It is anticipated that the cost will be two-point-five-million dollars in 2022, which is an increase of almost a hundred-thousand dollars from 2021. Since 2020, the service manages an independent reserve to pay WSIB chargebacks for all claims approved. The 2022 WSIB reserve contribution will be three-hundred-thousand dollars. The Next Generation 911 systems across Canada, Canada, Canada is mandated by the CRTC and must be completed and functional by March of 2022. In the current year, we have invested two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars towards the project, and we will require an additional financial commitment in 2022 of three-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars. The total legislative impact for the Berry Police Service is thirty-one, or sorry, three-point-one-million dollars. We know our efforts to provide an excellent and affordable police service to a growing community with less financial flexibility is both imperative and challenging. This chart illustrates the ever-rising population of the City of Berry since 2011. On one axis, and on the other axis, is the percentage of the Berry Police Service budget in the City of Berry's overall budget, and you can see there is a steady decline. In 2011, we comprised twenty-one or twenty-five-point-one percent of the city's budget. In 2021, we represented only twenty-one-point-eight percent of the overall municipal budget. Our 2022 budget will permit us to continue to explore change and deliver excellent policing services while maintaining our commitment to our members and our community. After much consideration, the Berry Police Services Board has determined that the municipal funding required to provide an adequate and effective police service without specifically impacting the current service level in 2022 is fifty-eight-point-nine-million dollars, which is a two-point-eight-eight percent increase over our 2021 budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief Greenwood and Chair Ferguson. For the presentation, questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Ward, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation, Chief Greenwood. And I know that, as we've seen, the Berry Police Services covers a lot of responsibilities. But if you asked any councillor, what are the two things the public's most concerned about from the police? They'd say speeding and noise. It wouldn't even be close. Anything else wouldn't be close. Those are the things we get complaints about all the time. So is there anything in the budget in terms of those areas that we might see an increase in service?
The Berry Police Service is committed to safety and law enforcement in our community. And if you look at our strategic plan, our priority and objectives are safer roadways and pathways. And we are committed to, certainly, to community safety and enforcing all provincial laws, including some of the bylaws that the City of Berry have available to us. We have a dedicated traffic unit with one sergeant and eight police constables that are highly trained not just to do enforcement on our roadways for speed and noisy mufflers, but we have skilled individuals that are breathalyzer technicians. They perform duties in regards to field sobriety tests. So our traffic unit and along with our operational services are committed to traffic safety. But specific to the noisy mufflers, we have participated in normal, a number of initiatives to address this issue back when it became an issue that came to our attention. So we are listening and we are hearing what our councillors are saying, the members of council before us. We are listening to our community that have concerns in this area. We have a specific forms that councillors in the community can report, whether it's in our online reporting system or on Ping to address some of these concerns. And when I look at the work that we're doing, it is evidence-based and it is data-driven where our enforcement are. So we have our traffic hotspots, and those are our community safety zones and our high collision areas. And that is where we are investing in our resources to address the concerns by the community. And ones that we have identified through evidence and data. And that's where we are investing our people, our resources, and our technologies.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Next up, Deputy Mayor Ward, other questions of Chief Greenwood? Councillor Jim Harris.
I did see Council Congle's hand. I know she doesn't have her speech card. Do you want to go in brief? Okay, Mayor Lehman, she was up.
Sure. Go ahead, Councillor Congle. I missed it.
No, it's okay. Thank you. And I just, I see the card I actually brought in the dark. I found, but I didn't, I didn't use it. So thank you, Councillor Harris. Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Chief Greenwood. Last year, when we were having conversations around the Berry Police Budget, there was good dialogue around an appreciation of the reserves that Berry Police has, but how they're a bit different, and not to get into a comparison with other police budgets at this time of year where we look at media and other, other areas that sometimes capture an ability to balance budgets or requests. And you brought some really great information forward. I know in the budget you presented and in the presentation, you've made reference to different reserves being impacted. I think it was the Independent Reserve and some others. And it has been noted that the core grant funding has been significantly reduced in some areas. Is there anything for council or the public watching tonight to appreciate? Because other service providers sometimes have different amounts of reserve that they can pull from to offset the tax impact. Ask, can you share anything further about access to reserves and their current status?
During the presentation, I did talk about one reserve that we will be pulling some funds for, and that is our Health and Wellness Reserve. We will be utilizing twenty-thousand dollars from, sorry, ninety-thousand dollars from that reserve to support our early intervention programs. We have other reserves that we utilize for our Retirement Incentive Program in 2021. So this year, we drew upon them. We have experienced, like other police services across the province, some challenges in regards to retention of members. In addition to our incentive program, we have also had other members retire from our service. And we are presently in 2021 experiencing a deficit. And we will be drawing upon our Community Safety Reserve, our operational expenditures reserve to cover the deficit. So for 2022, we will not have access to any reserves to assist with our budget in 2022.
Thank you, Chief Greenwood. No further questions.
Thanks, Councillor Congle. Councillor Harris.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Lehman, and through you to Chief Greenwood. Now, thank you, Chief Greenwood. There's always so much in such a large and important service this. So thank you for the presentation. I will say, I was really interested. It was a number that I was kind of curious about was the percentage of the police budget as a part of the whole city budget. And it was very interesting to see a ten-year consistent decline in the percentage of police service as a base to the full budget. And I know some people will, obviously, will be happy with that. And I think everybody wants better value regardless of what we, what we're buying. So that's a good thing. And though some people might see that as a concern, I just wanted to know if you, if you could just speak to the, you know, that, that hasn't been a concern, that that three-point-three percent decrease of the total overall city budget has actually been manageable and the police services is, is able to adequately provide services, even though as a center of the overall budget, it's going down consistently and may continue, which, you know, obviously, people will be happy with continued value for their, for their police service dollar.
So the, the budget that we have brought forward to council for approval is realistic. It focuses on multi-year sustainability, and it is really focusing in on innovative work that we will be doing within the service and focusing in on alternative responses to cover some of the concerns in our community. We will be working very closely with our partners to ensure that some of the work that we have traditionally done as a police service are being passed on to resources in our community that can best serve those specific issues that our community are facing. So it is a realistic budget. We are always looking to implement new things. This year and next year, we will be focusing on evidence-based policing. We're focusing in our, on our high, high harm spots in our community and our high crime volume and our high disorder in our community. So we're very strategic in regards to our deployment models to ensure that we are adequately serving our city and we're effective and efficient based on the information that we have available to us.
That's great. If you'd like, you can, Mayor Lehman, a couple of questions? That's wonderful. And so I would, it would seem to be, and I'll ask the question, that the opportunity presented by taking that, the approach to focus on evidence and data and being really strategic will, over time, inform where the policing is done. And not only, you know, you know, what, what part of the city, but the possibility, I think I heard you correctly, that it might be that, you know, if we learn that, you know, so many of these calls are social disorder calls, possibly over time, you know, it might not mean less police budget dollars, but other services might be deployed, which could then, to counsel, pardon me, Deputy Mayor Ward's point, get more, you know, traffic-related services, those kind of things. For people, I know in my ward, people are definitely, as Deputy Mayor Ward mentioned, concerned about speed and, and some of those other things that are, that are commonly requested of us councillors.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Harris.
Sorry, just one other. I, I know one of the things that I, I saw, there was a resolution from the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police regarding to calls under the Mental Health Act. And I was, I know we've talked about this before, and those who watch television will probably have seen the Austin Model last night on, on, on Sixty Minutes. But there's the option of, and I think we, you know, it's been piled, I think maybe in York, but where you, when you call 911, you have the option of getting police, fire, ambulance, or paramedics in a mental health response. Is that something, I know, I talked to Deputy Chief Johnson about it, that, you know, forward-looking down the road, is that one of those potential evidence-based solutions that would, would be a part of the future for Berry Police Services?
Thank you very much, Councillor Harris. In regards to our response to mental health calls within our community, it is something that we have been working on for, for many years. We currently have our Coast Program. We are applying for grant funding at the provincial level for a mobile crisis response team. We're also investing in our 2022 budget, a mental health researchers. So we're actually evaluating the work that we are doing in our community to ensure that we are responding appropriately to our mental health calls and what other resources are available in our community to respond in partnership with us, or they solely respond to those incidences. So we have examples in other police jurisdictions that are evaluating programs, also from the OPP that have mental health communicators right in the communication center and deal over the telephone for those that are at elevated risk or in crisis. But we still know that we need to have officers that are trained in conflict resolution to be able to respond to those emergency situations. So it's a very much a blended approach in our community to ensure that we are dealing with those that are in crisis or we have another service available to deal with those that are in crisis.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just happened to come across a resolution of that. What a, what a great initiative from the Chiefs of Police in supporting mental health services and making sure, you know, the right service was dispatched as early as possible. So I, I did catch that and wanted to note that. So that's very positive. So those are my questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions for Chief Greenwood? Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. And thank you, Chief Greenwood and Mr. Ferguson for being here this evening and for your presentation. And a couple of questions. So my first question. So back, back when City Council set our budget direction for the 2022 budget, we had a discussion about the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, and we made a request of the Berry Police Services Board for some more detail, some specifics about how the Berry Police funding is being dedicated and targeted at that Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. Now, in your, in your presentation, I appreciate the, the points that you brought to us about the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, but I'm wondering if we can expect a bit more detail in terms of the actual funding dollars and how that's being allocated towards achieving those goals in the plan, because that's not something I saw tonight in the presentation.
In regards to our Community Safety and Wellbeing Unit, as I've already illustrated in the presentation, we are committed to the plan. We have eleven of the fifteen action items, and our Community Safety and Wellbeing Unit, the priority for the service, when we talk about community safety-concerned approaches, we are always going to have an incident response. We have a crisis or risk intervention response to it, harm prevention, and social development approach of it. So we are looking at a new deployment model for high harm and disorder, and we are basing this on a Canadian Harm Index that has been developed internally here, similar to the Cambridge University. And I sound like I'm going on to, to great lengths. When we look at the number of resources assigned to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Unit, we have eighteen specific members of our service that are solely responsible for community safety and well-being. Some of their responsibilities, as, as I spoke to, with our priorities and our objectives there, are about our core service delivery. But we know that a percentage of their time will be on ensuring that we meet our action items with the plan. So when we have embedded as our core funding source is the City of Berry, and this is the City of Berry's plan, we are ensuring that the dollars and the resources that we have assigned are within the, the request that we have asked of council to address the plan. So I would say approximately, out of our fifty-eight-point-nine-million-dollar request, I would say approximately a million dollars of that request is specifically targeted to the eleven of the fifteen action items.
That's, I appreciate that, that answer. That's helpful. My second question is around, in your presentation, you had mentioned the improvements to CCTV cameras in the downtown. It's my understanding that funding for those upgrades and additional cameras came from the province through a grant. Was that included in the Community Safety and Policing Grant that you had outlined on your slide, looking at grants and other revenues?
I'm sorry, one moment. I'm just going to, if we could pull up the grant funding, please? Thank you. My apologies. I was speaking and I didn't have it listed here. Under the grants that have been provided by the service, we have spent in 2021 already the funds associated with the CCTV cameras. And in that program, we have additional 20 locations covered in our downtown, whether it's from Meridian Place along Dunlop. So we have and will continue to seek funding to support this. And we anticipate that we will be gaining some more funding that will be placed in our 2022 budget when our contracts are confirmed. So they're not shown here specifically to the CCTV cameras.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, so 2021, you'd spent the grant revenue, is that for the capital side of the CCTV program? And then you have ongoing operating costs that have yet to be determined for 2022? Am I understanding?
Yes, I'm just trying to get the details.
Okay, yeah, no worries.
One moment. I will look in my binder, because I'm going to go off of the top of my head, and I don't want to give you inaccurate figures.
And if you can't find it right now, that's totally okay. And it can be followed up offline. I appreciate that.
This massive binder, and I can't actually locate it in the document. But I have, so for our 2021 budget, we had $170,000 in our capital. And we have maintenance provided to us of $45,000.
Okay, so that makes sense, because the grant from the province was $170,000. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. My next question is about the Inside Out program at Central County District School Board, schools. There's a group in the community called Parents Against Racism in Central County. And one of their demands is to remove police from schools and to ensure that any police inclusion has proper oversight before materials are shared with students. I'm wondering if you can speak a bit to that concern that's coming from that group in the community and also the funding side of that Inside Out program? Is that coming through the municipal funding grant? Or is that coming, is that being paid for by the school board?
The Inside Out program, the research and the evidence that we utilize to develop the program, has already, we have already received funding for it, and it was spent in last year. So in 2020, we sought out grant funding. We received it. It was utilized to develop the program. We have members of our service that are participating on some of the communities that you have referenced. We are working with the French School Board, Canarc, and Shakhs World to look at the implementation and the development, not to development, sorry, but the implementation of the Inside Out program to communities that are looking to have this within their systems.
Okay, so the funding that was spent in 2021, that was through the municipal grant? Or was that funded by the school board?
No, the funding was never from the school board. This was funding that we sought out through the Community Safety and Policing Grant, which is provincial funds.
Okay, thank you. And building off of that, the School Resource Officer Program, is that funded through the municipal grant, or is that funded by the school board?
There is no funding that the Berry Police Service receives from our school boards. The funding for our school resource officers in our elementary schools, they are special constables, and they are funded through municipal dollars through the City of Berry.
Okay, thank you, Chief Greenwood. That's it for my questions, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Chief Greenwood? Councilor Ripma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Greenwood, for your presentation. I really appreciated that. And I think that I really appreciated the slide on page 31 that Councilor Harris alluded to earlier, too, that shows that your budget is steadily decreasing as a percentage of the overall city budget. I'd also like to say that the Community Safety and Well-Being Officer and the group that you have working in that area are much appreciated and by the community in general, certainly the people that I talk to in Ward 1. So I think, you know, in many respects, we're moving in the right direction. You did mention very briefly that you're going to be working on the Justice Center. Can you talk a little bit about that? I know it's still evolving, but I'd be interested to know where you see that going.
Thank you very much. It's certainly an initiative that is very close to the Berry Police Service. We're working in partnership with the Ministry of Attorney General. We have commitments from our local Crown Attorneys on this initiative. It is based on restorative justice, ensuring that members of our community that are cycling through the judicial system that really require additional help, whether that be addictions, mental health issues, housing. This Justice Center is a wraparound holistic approach to support individuals that shouldn't be in the judicial system. And they will be supported and housed, or supported through the system. And if they meet the criteria and they complete the requirements placed on them by the judge, then we are much better as an organization, as a community, because they're no longer committing offenses or high harm for themselves or high harm in the community.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I really encourage you to move forward with that.
Thank you very much, and it's very much connected to the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. And we hope to embed the Justice Center into the community campus model that is part of what we would like to gain for our community.
Thanks, Councilor Ripma. Other questions for the chief? Councilor Morales?
Thank you, chief. I just want to start by some personal feedback. I think that the School Special Constables Program is incredible. I know in my personal experience, over a decade ago, having that present in the schools is a great opportunity for people who are in their impressionate years to develop a positive relationship with the police. And, you know, that is, you know, it's finding the right fit, right? It's finding the right officer. Some officers are great at being detectives. Some officers are great at being traffics. Some officers, like Officer Burks, are just great at being a little bit more frontward-facing. So I definitely kudos to that program from a personal perspective. My question to you is, Deputy Mayor Ward covered the speeding one, I guess, and Councilor Alwyn covered a bit of the cameras downtown. What in this budget can you communicate to members of public, members of council, and businesses in the downtown Berry perimeter about policing in the downtown Berry?
Thank you very much for your question, Councilor Morales. I think that when I have spoken at great length in regards to the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan and the work that we are doing with our deployment model focusing in on high social disorder, high crime, high-volume type of calls for service, I can say that we work very closely with the merchants in our downtown downtown corps with the BIA. When we look at the overall calls for service in our downtown, we know that it represents 9%, or correction, sorry, 7% of the overall calls for service in our city. We dedicate a large number of resources to our downtown through our new model. And we have in the past, and we will continue to dedicate resources to our downtown in the areas that need to have our attention focused in on.
Okay, perfect. In terms of recent events, and I'm not, you know, sometimes they're covered more than they are. Sometimes the information says that incidents have always been there. They're just being reported more on social media. There's been businesses that have had an increased number of break-ins. But I think what's noteworthy, it's basically the attitude in which they break in. These are not so much crimes of opportunity, which we all know, if you leave your car unlocked, crimes of opportunity. If you don't lock up your business in downtown Berry and go for the night, crime of opportunity. But, you know, when we see videos in the media, such as somebody using a chair or shovel, I don't recall what it was, and flat-out just going at it, going to the glass for longer, and timed the video, but definitely longer than 20 seconds, this is now an escalated level of incidents. And I don't want to be hyperbolic and say that, you know, we're getting to levels of aggression that we're seeing in media from the US. But there's definitely a communicated level of concern, specifically businesses that are targeted, not just once, not just twice, but it keeps going. It's disheartening. Businesses are trying to recover from COVID, and they're trying to incentivize residents to, you know, support local, come downtown and take part in different experience. So is there anything that you would say to those businesses? Either advice or support from Berry Police that this budget will empower the Berry Police Service to better reduce those incidents, reduce the severity, and reduce the concern?
Thank you very much for your question. When we look at the resources that we have deployed in the downtown corps, we have provided crime prevention through environmental design to support the businesses that are downtown. We have our Community Safety and Well-Being Officer that has developed programs specific to downtown with our Bright Spot and works very closely with the residents to ensure that it's not just individual safety we're focusing on, it's community safety, individual safety, and business safety. And we will continue with our efforts to support businesses and residents across our city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions for Chief Greenwood? Councilor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I'll be really quick. Through you to the chief, thank you for your presentation, and to the chair, Mr. Ferguson. And because I sit on the police board, I know what goes into this. So the whole team that put this together and, you know, sharpening the pencil to try to do our best and bring forward a valued budget to the taxpayer. One thing, though, I was looking and trying to find out, and maybe you have it and stuff, what is this comparable to other forces in their ask with their services in, you know, comparable police forces? What are their budget requests? Are we, you know, somewhat kind of in the middle? Are we asking for a little bit more? Would you have that information?
I can say police services across the province and municipalities are all within the time for budget. So services and municipalities are in different times. But I can tell you that the complexity of municipal budgeting is certainly there in its local focus. But what I can say is the reporting, management, and approval of police budgets are somewhat different. So the Berry Police Service, we provide to council a blended operation and capital budget. There are services across the province that provide very separate operating and capital budgets. And we have other services that just provide an operational budget, because the capital is covered by the municipality. We have assessment growth that are applied to some police services. The Berry Police Service does not get the benefit of the assessment growth. We have some services that our facilities are covered by the municipality and things like the Next Gen 911-specific legislative impacts. That is actually embedded in the municipality's budget. So specific to what I know is occurring within the province and that are comparators to the Berry Police Service, Greater Sudbury, they include operating and capital like us. And their board-approved increase is 4.7%. Kingston, that only reports on their operating, is 3.64% increase. Guelph, they only report on their operating budget, and that is 3.73%. Thunder Bay, we're not always compared to them, as they are remote policing in very unique circumstances. But their operating budget is 3.41% increase. And Peterborough also is operating increase of 3.49%. So when you look at the Berry Police Service, we aren't even close to our comparators at 2.88% increase.
Great. Thank you for the answer, and thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, Councilor Thompson. Any other questions for the chief on the police presentation? Okay, seeing none. I thank you very much, chief. Thank you, Chair Ferguson. Of course, this is part of our discussion and debate next Monday as part of the global budget, and we appreciate you being here and answering all those questions tonight. And congratulations as well on the arrests made in the homicide on Friday. I know that alarmed many people in our community. And the swift work to locate and arrest the perpetrators, alleged perpetrators, is much appreciated, I know, by the community. Okay, sorry, go ahead, chief.
I was just going to say, thank you very much. And as you have brought forward the tragic incident that has happened in our city, I just want to offer the condolences to the family and friends of our victim. And we know that this has impacted our community, our school, community, the specific neighborhood. And we know that after this weekend, four families have been tragically impacted. And the work that was done by all members of our service that we're working from our 911 communicators to our officers that arrive first on scene, to our investigators, to our tech crime, to our corporate communication, it just shows the expertise and dedication of our members. And I think that we are able to do significant work in our community. And thank members of council for speaking and listening to us today. And I would like to offer a special thank you to the leadership team and all of those that contributed to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, up next is the Berry Public Library. And I see Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Jessup have joined us. So I will turn the floor over to them. Lauren is, of course, Chief Executive Officer, Lauren Jessup of the Berry Public Library, and Austin Mitchell is Chair of the Board. Over to you, Austin and Lauren.
Good evening, Mayor Lehman and members of council. Just going to share my presentation here with you. There we go. I think that's good. Okay, good evening again, Mayor Lehman and members of council. The library's goals for 2022 address the persistent The library's goals for 2022 address the persistent need to reach individuals and families throughout our growing community and to meet them where they are. This budget maintains service levels while also expanding community outreach, collections and the creation of flexible engaging spaces. We're proud of our ability over the last 18 months to adapt our service models and introduce new ways to do business during a very challenging time. Austin and I are excited to share some of the ways we've made our services more efficient, more fun and simply better for our patrons. We've seen firsthand the importance of social infrastructure to community resilience and want to continue to do what we can to support Berry's renewal. We're happy to report that we plan to move our strategic priorities forward while adhering closely to the 2% budget increase recommended by council. In 2020, we saw a dramatic 70% increase in the use of our e-resources and a 28% increase in digital library checkouts. 2021 was another bumpy year for browsing and borrowing in person. But we're finding now that many patrons continue to use electronic materials while also borrowing physical materials from our branches. A modest increase in digital library use has been recorded so far in 2021 as a more significant increase in the use of e-resources. Online learning tools like LinkedIn Learning, Creative Bug and Universal Class have allowed our patrons to practice new hobbies, upgrade their skills and keep their minds busy. Newly acquired this year to support patron demand is a resource called Brainfuse. Brainfuse offers live study help from a professional tutor. Students can receive help with homework and patrons of all ages can ask for help with English and French language learning, preparation for the Canadian citizenship test and resume writing. It's a wonderful asset to help our community members get back on track with learning and employment. To support our patrons as they select materials online, we adopted a more accessible and engaging online catalog called Bibliocomms. Since introducing our patrons to this new tool, we've seen 159% increase in virtual visits to the catalog. The new catalog showcases user-generated reviews, staff curated book lists and reading suggestions. Bibliocomms also integrates community contributed content from all participating libraries. So our patrons can see reviews and book lists from libraries across North America. It's an engaging, modern search tool that encourages curiosity and discovery. We've also made our digital library and the internet more accessible to patrons at our Painswick Library by making laptops available for patron use. This initiative supports physical distancing requirements and allows patrons who may not have a device the opportunity to work, read or study at a laptop bar, table or in the comfortable lounge furniture located throughout the branch. This model is also planned for our new Holly Community Library. Our strategic plan identified the need to create flexible functional spaces that are a joy to spend time in, and that's just the vibe inside the recently refurbished Painswick Library. Painswick's new shelving and furniture is colorful, comfortable and reflects the library's vision to create a space where community comes together. This new way of showcasing our collection has been well received by our patrons and those of you we have been lucky enough to host at Painswick. As you can see behind me, Painswick's shelving model has a curve to it. It has face out displays and attractive merchandising that draws patrons through the space to help them find something new and engaging. We do all we can to make sure our patrons feel welcome and safe in our spaces. With safety protocols in place and branch services have resumed. We're back to our pre-pandemic operating hours. Patrons can browse, borrow or use express pickup if that service is more convenient or feels safer for them. We're engaging patrons with both in-person and virtual programs and we're prioritizing human connection above all. With the help of our community partners, we continue to focus on mental health and reducing feelings of isolation. Volunteers from the listing posts are lending a sympathetic ear and staff from the Canadian Mental Health Association are spending time in the library to support the community in our spaces. One of the first programs to resume in person was our ever-popular English Conversation Circle. Newcomers attending this program are finding community through the library. One participant recently noted that since arriving in Canada, the library has become an integral part of their day-to-day lives. Borrowing DVDs and books encourages language skills and it means they don't have to spend money on costly subscription services. English Conversation Circle gives newcomers a chance to participate in community, practice English and build friendships. As I've mentioned, we've cautiously expanded our programs and services as it has been safe to do so and as regulations have allowed. So far in 2021, 4,100 new members have been added to the group of over 35,000 members actively using the library. New and existing patrons continue to browse and borrow physical materials and we've seen a 19% increase in circulation this year as people return to the library. In August and September of this year, more than 150 participants enjoyed in-person storytime programs and there's always a waiting list. Taking advantage of the nice weather, we engage our youngest patrons in city parks, on the downtown library's rooftop garden and here at the lawn at Painswick. Outdoor storytime supports children's natural curiosity and learning. It provides stories, rhymes and music with a focus on early literacy and parent education so that caregivers come away with literacy skills they can continue at home. Our new service model meets our community where they are. We're expanding access to the library through safe outreach opportunities like story walks in city parks, the ever-popular Holly outdoor storytimes and engaging activities at our open-air Dunlop tent and beyond. Since resuming outreach in 2021, we have met 970 library users in the community at outreach events.
So let's look towards next year. This slide provides an overview of our budget request and I will highlight a couple of the more significant drivers resulting in the slight increase over last year. The board has determined that the municipal funding required to maintain adequate and effective library service in 2022 is $181,000 over the approved 2021 municipal grant. This is an increase of 2.03%, a modest figure that is in line with the direction provided by city council. An additional $117,000 has been added to 2022's budget to provide for a full year of operating the Holly Library. Funds dropped at Holly were reduced by council last year to reflect a prorated operating cost for the Holly Library. We expect close to a full year of operating in 2022 and the budget reflects that. An increase in salaries and benefits accounts for annual step and contractual agreements as well as a 7% increase in the cost of benefits. Library materials are being supported by a draft from reserves to ensure our budget request remained within the threshold of the 2% recommended by council. The percentage of this budget line that is spent on digital materials continues to increase. And as we have shared previously, digital materials are more expensive than physical items. Most renewals of software have an annual increase of 4%, which does challenge our budget. We continue to look at new software which will streamline our ability to provide services in a virtual environment. Some of our most significant pandemic-related expenses have been software-related to ensure we can provide safe, flexible service to our patrons. Nearly half of what you see under contracted and other services are funds expensed by corporate facilities to maintain our spaces. This includes overall facilities maintenance and custodial services. Corporate facilities determines this figure annually with input from library management. The opening of the Holly location may impact this number going forward as we do not yet know the exact cost to maintain and care for that facility. We have found savings in the budget in a number of areas, including a reduction in consulting and professional services. However, there are also increases such as the amount budgeted for insurance and financial fees. This increase supports two initiatives, an outreach vehicle and funds to facilitate bringing the handling of library finances in-house. We anticipate this change will help realize efficiencies in our operations and reporting. This is a high-level overview and we are happy to come back to provide further details at the end of the presentation. As mentioned, this budget also includes funding for a full year of operating the Holly Community Library. We haven't been able to open as quickly as we planned. However, leasehold improvement plans are in place, shelving and furniture are ordered and collections are on the way. Smart Centers is beginning the leasehold improvement shortly to ensure the space is ready to welcome visitors in the spring. Since we're not open in the space yet, there are still a number of unknowns. Funding received in 2021 for Holly operating can be put aside and used for any potential overages that may arise as we get, excuse me, as we get into the space. We're so excited to bring a library to this community. Everything is planned and ready to go. You can see from this rendering that the space will look great as a library. Also, as mentioned earlier, community outreach has been a focus in 2021 and we were planning even more outreach in 2022 as we introduced BPL on the go, a mobile outreach vehicle. Offering pop-up library spaces, spaces in underserved areas of the city will provide equitable service delivery, engage new members, connect with those that are marginalized, promote our physical and digital collections and resources and increase our memberships. The mobile outreach unit is a BPL ambassador in high-growth and underserved areas such as Northwest Berry, City of Berry Community Gardens, schools and around community centers. This expanded outreach will largely be funded through grants and fundraising, although the costs associated with leasing, insuring and maintaining a vehicle have been accounted for in 2022's budget. We spent the summer successfully expanding our outreach through partnerships with the City of Berry for our Park Puzzle Challenge, with the BIA for Open Air Dunlop and with the Berry Native Friendship Center as we supported Canada's first National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. These and other outreach initiatives increase the visibility of the library and the community, bring our resources to our patrons outside of our walls and reduce barriers to access. BPL on the go will increase this visibility further and make it easier and more convenient for staff to reach our patrons where they are. Public libraries encourage human connection, inspire community participation and shape the way people interact. As we continue to improve our programs, services and access, we are bolstering the social infrastructure of our city, leading to a more resilient and happy community. We appreciate council's continued support. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Lauren and Austin. Questions for the library? Wow, must have been a solid all-around presentation. Counselor Harvey, go ahead.
Actually, this is a question I already know the answer to, but maybe it's more just for the public. Because I know you have used Painswick as your backdrop for your presentation this evening. And just wanted to highlight and maybe if you can expand on it, the fact that the anticipated feel and vibe of the Holly branch will be somewhat similar to that of Painswick's new look.
For sure. Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Harvey. Yeah, we chose Painswick as our location tonight. I'm, that's going to make people dizzy if I do that. But because we have refreshed the shelving and in some ways it was a bit of a trial for our Holly location. This is new shelving for us and it's definitely different than what we have had in the past. So you'll, you'll recognize downtown library and what we had before at Painswick was lots of rows of tall linear shelving. And what you see here behind me is much more open. It's pleasing to the eye, it's colorful and it draws people through the space. So the shelves have a curve to them, which is actually intended to use those retail practices to bring people through the space so that they can find what they're looking for. So yeah, you will see the same shelving in place in the same colors at Holly. So the idea is that over time, as you go into any one of our locations, you will see a similar, you'll, you'll feel a similar way when you come into the spaces welcoming and, and bright.
Great, thanks a lot and I hope to see this branch opening soon. Like you said, spring 2022.
Thanks, Counselor Harvey. I think I saw another card. Was there another question for the library? Counselor Jim Harris?
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Lauren and Mr. Mitchell. I, or Ms. Jessup and Mr. Mitchell, I appreciate your presentation. And you gave us lots this year. You also gave us a economic impact report from 2018, which I thought was really interesting. So thanks for that. And, you know, I always ask about the, the E-library, digital library. I think, you know, the future is at our fingertips, which we get used to. So I noticed the $2.2 million economic impact of that digital library in 2018. Is it fair to say the investment and the impact of the digital library is significantly greater? Here we are in 2021, approach 2022, after a pandemic, which has really amplified the access and use of digital materials?
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Harris. I don't have the exact numbers, but I would say off the cuff, yes. Obviously, people, more people are using the digital library. So more people using the resource is going to increase that economic benefit for sure.
If I missed it, I apologize. So that continued investment, I know we, we've actually sent a letter on behalf of the libraries, knowing that digital materials can be very expensive, time limited and those licenses, a book you have forever, but a license for a book you may not have forever. You know, is there continued in the efforts to kind of build that digital library to really amplify access? You know, is that portion of the budget being weighted more in digital? Or how is that being managed? Sorry.
Yeah, for sure. So in 2021, our, the percentage of our budget being spent on digital is 57%. And in 2020, it was 55%. So it is increasing more towards digital. And so, yeah, we're at 42.85% physical and 57.15% digital. And you're right, those, those digital materials do cost more than the physical books for sure.
Great, thank you. Maybe the last, one last one, because it really jumped out for me and I just wanted to understand if I got it correctly. In the executive summary of the economic impact or even the program section, it mentioned that in 2018, 36,000 people participated in over 1,680 free programs or one in four Berry residents attending a program. Is that one in, actual one in four individuals or a, or is it 36,000 people which represents one in four? But 36,000 people could, people who came more than once. So that's, that's incredible. If that's 30,000 people came, that's incredible. That needs to be really highlighted. So I just wanted to know if that was actually the number of people or number of expenses total, some who may have come more than once. Thank you.
It's likely people coming more than once.
Okay, thank you. I just, wow, that's incredible. So thank you.
Yeah.
And just, just to kind of add to that, the 36,000 number reminded me of it. But I think, I think somewhere in our slides, we mentioned that there's 35,000 active library users in the systems. So that just shows how many people are using the library system.
Okay, so unique individuals, 35,000?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's all my questions.
Thanks.
Yeah, quick follow-up on that. And sorry, you may have said it. How many of those are from outside of Berry? Or is that Berry alone, that 35,000 number?
Sorry, Mayor Lehman, I don't have the number of our out-of-town members in my head. I'm going to have to look that up and get back to you if that's okay.
Okay, no problem.
I would include those though.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Kung.
Thank you through you, Mayor Lehman, to Ms. Jessup or Mr. Mitchell, as appropriate. So as we think about library services and the region of Simcoe County, are there any cost-sharing opportunities that are possible and have been explored or that you currently have even with other neighboring libraries or partnerships in that regard?
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Kung. Yes, we do partner with other libraries. So in terms of our programming, we've been partnering a lot lately with other libraries in Simcoe County to share the cost of author visits. We've done our popular Simcoe Reads program. That's a partnership program with other libraries. So we, you know, we're leveraging each other's talents there. And we've also been talking to the County of Simcoe as they explore their service level review. They did speak with Austin and I, the consultants did, when they were doing that investigation into the service review at the County of Simcoe. And so we are always looking for ways that we can share the cost of things. So there's nothing shared with the County of Simcoe at this moment, but not to say that there wouldn't be, that that wouldn't be explored in the future.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Austin and Lauren from the library? Okay, seeing none, I'll just thank you both for the presentation and I think we're all excited about opening Berry's third public library ranch and serving the southwest part of the city. So thank you for the presentation and for being here tonight.
Thanks very much. We're very excited.
Thanks.
Take care, bye.
Our third and final presentation tonight is by the County of Simcoe. And I will now call on Trevor Wilcox, General Manager of Corporate Performance for the county to provide the presentation. There he is. Welcome, Trevor, to Berry City Council. Thanks for being with us tonight and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lehman. I will just try and begin by sharing my screen here. All right, I hope that is clear. Yes?
Yep, all good.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's perfect, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. We are happy to be here. Joined with me is Greg Bishop, General Manager of Social and Community Services, Jane Sinclair, the General Manager of Health Emergency Services, and Leland Cibic, who is our treasurer, and I'm the General Manager of Corporate Performance. In an effort to streamline things this evening and get through the budget piece to to your questions, which I'm sure you might have a few for us, I'm going to cover all of the financial components and and focus on the budget and the changes to the budget. You know, the pieces this year, I'll focus mainly on the number side and the the service components. And then I'll stop and it will allow for questions at that point. The the general managers will be able to provide answers to questions and and all of the other information, as far as other slides, has been provided to you in in a follow on appendix or or background information. So if I may, I'll just start. So just looking at our budget here, you can see this is our overall budget, which I will come back to you at the end. I just want to give you an overall breakdown. It does show a trend over the last four years in terms of where things are. This is the component that is allocated to the city of Berry. I'll point out that this year, here in the operating line here, we've got a 3.9% increase or about $862,000 year over year. That outlines the operating. Then there's a capital component down below. Again, I'll show some details to that as we go along. But we do provide a line by line piece for each of the services. These are all the key services that we provide. And we do have a shared service agreement, which I'll go through now. So we do have a shared services agreement or municipal services agreement outlining the main services that we provide through that. These have a cost sharing agreement with them based upon either a usage type metric or a weighted taxable assessment or or share type metric. So the paramedic services are based upon weighted taxable assessment. You can see that long term care is a blend of both caseload and weighted taxable assessment. Ontario Works and some of children's services, the vast majority are based upon a caseload. There are a few services that we don't have caseload for, so they are allocated based upon weighted taxable assessment. And then we have our community services, social housing and nonprofit, and those are based upon weighted taxable assessment, which is at 25%. So Berry is 25% out of the 100% right now for weighted taxable assessment. So looking at each service, here is our children's services or part of our social community services. So children's services. You can see that the Berry, the the service itself is a $5.6 million fully allocated service. The Berry portion of that is 37%. The caseload right now for children's services is about 38% of the cases are in Berry. From a community services standpoint, this is weighted taxable assessment. So it's a $3.7 million service. 925,000 is allocated to the city of Berry. Ontario Works, again, about $9.3 million to provide all the services regarding Ontario Works. And this is the allocation to Berry, which is based upon a 39% and allocation of caseload, which is 39% of the cases are in Berry. For Simcoe County Housing Corporation and Social Housing Nonprofit, both of these are allocated based upon weighted taxable assessment. So you can see here that we have the Simcoe County Housing Corporation allocation of municipalities is $8.9 million in terms of the cost of the service to us and $20.5 million for nonprofit housing. And then you can see the Berry portion of that, which is based upon weighted taxable assessment. So which is 25%. However, I would note that approximately 47% of the units across both the continuum here of housing, 47% is located in the city of Berry. Now we turn to Health and Emergency Services. So Health and Emergency Services is long term care and paramedic services. The long term care service comprises four different homes across the region, total cost of $14.48 million. The the average per home, if you looked at the cost of a home, would be about $3.6 million then to operate a single home. The allocation to Berry is 11%. Again, this was weighted based upon the number of resident bed days and weighted taxable assessment. And then the paramedic service here is a 27.5 or 27.4 million dollar service across the region. The allocation to Berry is based upon 25% weighted taxable assessment. So that's $7 million for for your paramedic service fully allocated to provide that service to the city of Berry. The call volume in terms of what volume of calls actually reach the city or originate the city of Berry is 32% of the call volume. So speaking specifically to expenses and what has occurred this year, and we anticipate to occur next year, of course, there are COVID-19 impacts to our budget. There were two specific expenses related to COVID-19 in long term care and paramedic services. The long term care component is home service assistance. And in paramedic services, it's the COVID-19 associated assistance strike force. That those two components are outlined here. These costs are allocations within your allocation of costs to the city of Berry. But we pulled them out because they can be allocated or you or you can utilize if you choose your safe restart funding towards these costs, similar to other costs that are related to COVID-19. Doing that would reduce the operating increase component to $474,000, $78,000, or about a 2.2% increase. In terms of funding that we has already been allocated within the budget, but has no impact on your funding is both in long term care in in the housing corporation. So in long term care, there was funding that was provided to maintain a cohort of staffing model. We received funding from the province for that throughout this year. And to continue that into next year, we allocated funding because we're we're getting a reduction in funding by the province. But we need to maintain that. So we're allocating COVID funding, safe restart funding from the county, $4.1 million to that to cover these costs. And the component related to the city of Berry would be about $463,000. That reduces that requirement. It's not going to have an impact on any funding that's received by the city of Berry, though. Again, in the housing corporation, there has been a an impact related to the need for security in some of our housing. We provided that this year in 2021, and we will be continuing it in 2022. So we are again using the county's safe restart funding, $651,000 for that. So no impact to the city of Berry and reduces the requirement by 166,000. If we hadn't passed those along, there would would have been naturally an increase to the impact in Berry of 1.4 million or about 6.8%. So turning back to the overall picture related to to our operating capital budget, you can see that this outlines the increase. You can see the pieces that I've talked about here. This piece here is long term care. That's the change from forecast, and that's related to the the piece that we are funding for next, saying we you can fund for next year. Overall, we have a 3.9% impact. And then we have our capital. I'll go through the capital in a little more detail on the next slide. But this, what this outlines is the MFC, which is the major facility construction projects, which we are financing over a 10 year time horizon for the the cities. So we're allocating those costs, we're in incurring those costs, but the that's both the city of Really and city of Berry pays those across a 10 year time horizon. Here is the capital. We broke it down into MFC or major facility capital projects and non capital. The the non MFC are largely asset management type projects, things that we need to continue to service the buildings that we have, the facilities that we have, ambulances, et cetera. So those are included there. A couple of additions. We do have one ambulance addition this year. We have a drone program which are trialing as well as a pilot for for this year as well. On the major facility capital projects, you can see that we've got a number of stations that are under development. Redevelopment of a manor, long term care facility in Simcoe, Simcoe Manor down in Beaton, as well as a number of housing initiatives that are starting. One of them will be in the city of Berry. It's the the land has been purchased and the design work will happen in 2022. The really a project is well underway. The Bradford building itself will be starting this year. That land is is being prepped and groundbreaking will probably be early next year. So that is the capital there. And then this shows how the financing is allocated for the the total MFC payment for this year. So with that, I think I'll just summarize where we're at with the budget. I outlined a number of impacts in terms of some funding changes. Our general managers could go into some more detail with that if you have any questions related to social housing, children's services and long term care. There's some moderate impacts, as I as I mentioned, to paramedic services and community services. We do have direct staffing costs related to long term care in the homes, which we are covering largely with the COVID restart funding. Capital charges are higher this year mainly due to the significant construction that's going on for a couple of the housing projects and the long term care facility. This MFC financing outlines the closing balance at this point now is $30 million that we are financing. That's the city of Berry's components. And just a note that the capital component, which I'm sure your finance staff can elaborate on, is eligible for DC revenue for the the growth component of the projects that I've outlined. So that will help provide some relief, at least on the capital side. With that, I will stop there and we are happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Trevor. Questions for Mr. Wilcox? Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Mr. Wilcox, it's great to hear about the increase in in the paramedic services that you were discussing. And I definitely want to give you a huge kudos for its earned. I believe the county is behind the the new station that's being built in downtown Berry. I believe that station has gone through processes popping up. That's great. Obviously, lots of calls for service in that general area, and I love the efficient design, the efficient use of land and being near where the calls are. So big kudos. You know, I often ask the tough questions, but I want to hand out the the tough compliments as well when they're earned. For Southeast Berry, though, we as city council got kind of an update that the future fire station is is in the works, will eventually come to that Southeast Berry quadrant. Has the, does the county have any intention or has there been any discussions? And I'm asking this to you to you specifically, maybe our staff will jump in afterwards. But is there a desire from the county to maybe partner with the city of Berry in a in a kind of a fire truck ambulance hub model? And if not, are there any plans to independently do kind of a similar paramedic station, the ambulance station, the way they did it in downtown Berry? And I believe that kind of hub model where they share facility is prominent, not in all municipalities, but I believe Hamilton is known for that model of efficiency.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Morales. That is definitely, that's that's a post that's being put in place in the in downtown Berry that's part of the hub and spoke model. I think General Manager Sinclair should be on here for for this. So she can definitely speak to all our plans around that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate the question. We certainly are interested in potential partnerships for co-locating with future paramedic services posts. However, we don't typically recommend co-locating with fire services specifically. And it's really twofold with paramedic services and fire services being dispatched from the same station. There really is no advantage in terms of attending to a tiered response, medical aid tiered response call. It really one negates the other. And so we we want to work closely with our partners and coordinate where the various stations are so that we can really maximize the timeframe. However, there may be opportunities to co-locate with other types of city of Berry operations. I know we certainly have looked at that opportunity within the county, county itself in terms of other potential services. So we'll continue to work closely with your staff and and look for those opportunities.
Okay, I appreciate the feedback. That's 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 all, Mayor Lehman.
Other questions? Counselor Natalie?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Yeah, I'll start with a compliment kudos as well prior to my difficult questions. Question, don't worry. Um, so I'm so happy to see that Bradford is getting a new station. I was a paramedic there for nine years. I did Ridos, I think in 1999, when it was Lewis Ambulance, and then it changed to Health Trust, and then the county of Simcoe. And it is, that's great news. Anybody that knows how long that Bradford base has been in that little area will be really happy to hear that news as well. My question is about the service level discussions. And obviously, it's it's been pretty pretty prominent in the media lately that I'm concerned about our winter support and shelters, warming centers in particularly. And I'm just wondering what kind of discussions have been happening or have they been happening around adding warming centers that are outside of the shelter system that would be able to cover individuals who for one reason or another, either choose to not go to a shelter or can't?
Thank you very much, Counselor. And thank you for the recognition of the of the Bradford station. Very much appreciated. Our real estate department in partnership with Paramex spent a lot of time to finally find some real estate there, as with the post in Berry, which took some shoehorning to put that in there, but we're very happy about that. I see General Manager Greg Bishop is online, and he can answer your questions regarding shelters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, for the the question. With respect to the any local discussions around warming opportunities, the county of Simcoe and staff have been meeting regularly throughout the pandemic twice weekly with the emergency homeless shelters, largely to support the motel model of a shelter which accommodates an increased number of homeless as well as maintaining public health safety measures due to the pandemic. And more recently, discussions have led to an opportunity for a couple warming drop in and respite opportunities for individuals who are not sheltered for various reasons, but wanting to perhaps seek warmer environments during the cold weather. And so right now, we're looking at And, uh, so right now, uh, we're looking at, um, as you may know, Busby, uh, center is working out of a motel, uh, but their home location is being, will be utilized for respite, washrooms, uh, shower facility, as well as, um, drop-in warming for individuals who may not want to, um, access shelter. We also have, um, funding related to outreach, uh, services. And really ideally, our, our focus, um, that we support the operators in is to, um, connect individuals who are unsheltered to services and, and sheltering. But certainly recognize there are a number of, um, aspects and, and complexities related to, to the issue. Thank you.
Well, thank you, a follow-up, Mayor Lehman. Um, thank you. So through you, Mayor Lehman, I, I, I appreciate and I'm very grateful for all of the additions that you're discussing. But more so, my question is that we, we used to have a, uh, warming center out of the bus terminal for reasons that can't happen. Um, so I mean, outside of the shelter system. So there are individuals that maybe aren't even looking or ready, for whatever reason, shape or form, to, um, approach, look like using those social services. And, and, uh, they just need to get out of the cold. That's it. They, they just don't want to sleep on the streets in, um, below zero temperatures. So I'm more so looking for opportunities to get, uh, you know, in a very rapid timeframe, um, somewhere that these individuals can go. And I, I'm so happy that you're presenting tonight because I know that you are, um, in charge of the social services. And I just feel that, you know, we, we do need to have some more serious discussions about, um, the funding that does come to Barry with respect to the number of homeless that we do have. So maybe we can chat, uh, offline. I really welcome that conversation. Um, but I'm more so looking for something that doesn't connect actually to the, to the actual shelter services. Because the fact is, not everyone, uh, uses those for one reason or another. Do you have any other offerings for information with respect to?
Uh, to the counselor, uh, know our, um, work to date has been really maximizing the capacity within the existing system. Uh, when I mentioned other opportunities, um, that, that doesn't necessarily mean, uh, that they would be required to access the, the shelter, but more offering a number of services, um, meeting the person where they're at in terms of, um, their readiness for, uh, supports. And, uh, in this way, if I could add, um, the service providers have a number of, um, staff with expertise that could help, um, promote and, 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 you know, connect them to services. And that's, that's the intent. Um, there is a, a number of, um, local community-based initiatives and partnerships that help, um, when, uh, capacity is stretched. And, uh, that is part of the discussions as well, um, to bring in perhaps other staffing or, or other partnerships. One thing we noted through the pandemic, um, in the motel model, uh, CMHA was able to come to the table to provide, um, supports, uh, for those being, uh, residing in the motel as well as, um, paramedics through wellness checks. And, and so similar partnerships are often, um, really a best practice. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one more last follow-up. Thank you. Um, and I guess what I'm, I'm trying to really express is the, uh, spectrum, as you, I know, are aware of the, uh, the, the struggles that the homeless do face, uh, everywhere. But, uh, you know, here in Barry as well. And sometimes that means, uh, that they're not even ready to approach somewhere that offers services. Um, that sometimes there's a lot of reasons. There's not just one. There's many reasons. And, and really it literally means just staying warm. Um, and that's why the bus terminal was so beneficial, um, to have that space for them. So that's kind of where I'm looking for the answer. I love, obviously, that there are, um, there's dialogue with increasing op- opportunities to even bring access to services if they're ready for that. But the fact is, um, that's just not the case for all the individuals on the street. So I, I will, I will follow up with you after. I really, um, would love to discuss possible alternatives and additions. Um, maybe something similar to what Innisville has just passed, uh, having some of their libraries be used as a warming center, um, for quite an economical cost. So, um, just kind of playing around with that idea in my mind. So I'll let you know, but, uh, thank you for your presentation and for everything. And again, congratulations Bradford, Bradford base. Yes. Awesome.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. Uh, other questions for the county? Counselor Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, the first one is in, uh, in relation to, uh, the non, the affordable housing project that was announced for Barry on the old OPP lands. Um, I believe it was 150 units that was announced. Now, I'm just kind of curious where that number came from. Is there an opportunity to increase the amount of units on that property? Um, because when I consider the fact that we are about five times the population of the city of Aurelia and the city of Aurelia is just in the midst of getting 130 units, um, I would say that we have probably at least five times the problem here and the need, um, for this type of housing.
Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, for your, for your question, counselor. I think, uh, Mr. Bishop would be best to answer that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. Um, we look, it, it really does, uh, depend on a number of aspects. One is the, uh, footprint of, of, uh, the property as well as, um, looking at, um, how to, um, look at, uh, um, what is feasible to go in on the location. There will be at this location, and again, it's early preliminary design work. So the number could change somewhat. Um, but right now we're looking at a partnership with our interior works office, uh, relocating to that location as well as, uh, our children's services. And perhaps an opportunity for a community partnership similar to what we've, um, um, pursued in, uh, in terms of opportunities in other locations. Um, there has been, uh, a number of, there's, there's a real mix of affordable and social housing, um, opportunities that have occurred across the county. There's definitely a need in every region and, and particularly in the larger urban centers. Um, this one build will not be, uh, a solution to all, all situations or all demand, but, uh, it, it certainly will be a step in the right direction. We've been looking for a property for a number of years that was suitable, uh, in the city. And it, and it, uh, did take some time, but we're, we're pleased that we are able to, um, move forward on, um, exploring and, and doing some preliminary design. If that number does change, certainly happy to, uh, report that back through county council and, and the reps, uh, from city council.
If I may, may also, um, um, Mayor Lehman, just, uh, and, and add a little bit to that too. Just to provide you so, with some numbers, uh, the Simcoe County Housing Corporation, currently 24% of the units that are RGI units are, uh, residing within the city of Barry for, uh, the housing corporation itself. Um, and overall, uh, um, many, a larger percentage of the nonprofit funded, uh, units are in the city of Barry. So, uh, maybe not in a larger build, uh, specific to that, but we, we do have, uh, a number of units in the city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I do appreciate, I do appreciate the answer. Uh, I just wanted to highlight the, uh, the tremendous need that we seem to have here. And even though we do have 24%, as you say, it, uh, it just doesn't seem to be, uh, coming close to the need that, uh, that we can see, uh, that some of the citizens in our, uh, city have. Um, my next question's around paramedic services. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Wilcox, you and I and, uh, the chief had a meeting, uh, several months ago, uh, where I, I brought some concerns forward. Um, and, and this is truly like, I mean, our paramedics do a tremendous job. Um, they're probably the, they are the lowest paid of the first three responders, um, uh, which, uh, obviously I think in, in time, uh, that need, that gap needs to be closed. And you highlighted the fact that 32% of the call volume for the entire county is here in the city of Barry. Um, and I know actually Counselor Morales spoke about, uh, the southeast corner. And I, I know when we look at it, to be quite honest with you, right across the south end of the city, um, arrival times are, are of some concern. And I know there is a Southwest station planned, I believe, for 2027 or 2028 off the top of my head. Um, but that's many years out, out yet. So my, my question is, uh, twofold. Are we, are we seeing 32% of the allocated resources available for that? 32% of the call volume? And the other piece would be, uh, a, a follow-up question in regards to the co-lay, uh, co-locating piece. So I'll let you answer the first question and then I'll, uh, I'll move on to the second piece.
Uh, through you, Mayor, um, it's hard to judge exactly what percentage of resources are being allocated to the city of Barry. Would I, but I would say we have our emergency services campus located in the city of Barry. So the origination of much of the services that are, are, uh, going to the region, uh, do originate from the city of Barry and, uh, start and end their day there as well as the other bases. So, uh, but I'm sure General Manager Sinclair can expand on that and discuss the future of the service. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Um, and I guess the, the short answer would be yes. Uh, that the resources are actually, uh, deployed and, and, uh, within the city of Barry. And in fact, um, with the six full-time equivalents that we're adding, um, for 2022, uh, it's two 12-hour vehicles and one of them will be deployed in the city of Barry. Uh, and what happens, uh, uh, it's called a seamless principle. So the vehicles, the resources literally go where the calls are. And so often what we see is, uh, in a larger urban center, uh, where there's more calls, they will actually draw in resources. Once, once all the vehicles, the resources are, are busy, engaged in calls, the calls continue, we actually draw in resources from the neighboring municipalities. So, um, we are adding two 12-hour resources, uh, in 2022. One in the city of Barry, uh, one in the city of Aurelia, which will, we anticipate, address the, uh, the need in the city of Barry. But it will also help, uh, in Aurelia, help with the, uh, neighboring municipalities that often see their resources pulled into the larger centers because that's where the calls are. So I hope that helps, uh, clarify.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I do, I do understand the whole pivoting piece as, uh, as resources are getting pulled. All of a sudden you get a higher call volume in one area that, uh, will tie up resources. And obviously you want to maneuver your, uh, your staffs to, uh, to close those gaps as best as possible. Um, my other question would be about the co-locating piece because I've seen this work very well in other municipalities. Um, and, and I know you spoke with Sinclair saying that it doesn't, uh, increase arrival times. Now, obviously if, uh, an ambulance is leaving a fire hall the same time a fire truck is, there's not going to be an increase from that piece of it. However, if you just bring into the piece of the arrival time for that paramedic unit, these fire halls are strategically placed. There's six of them around the city, very equally spaced around. And if we had ambulances operating out of, not all of them, but at least a few of them, especially in the south end where some of the gaps are, um, that would dramatically increase your response times, keeping outside of whatever the fire department's response time would be just because of that, uh, layout that they have strategically for those locations.
I, I will say, uh, certainly, um, looking at potential partnerships and co-locating with, with other types of, uh, services with the city of Barry, uh, would be something that we would, um, you know, really welcome opportunities there. Um, uh, as part of our long-term, uh, facilities plan, we do, uh, exactly what you've, uh, indicated with your fire services is, is we literally map out where the calls are. And we, um, strategically plan all of our stations and our posts, uh, et cetera. So, um, uh, we do have, uh, a number of posts planned, uh, for the city of Barry in future. And, uh, I know you've made reference, uh, we, we have one, uh, tentatively scheduled for 2023, uh, one in, I believe in your ward, uh, 2026, and another, uh, potential just south of the border in 2025. So, um, you know, we will continue to, uh, work with your staff around our facility planning. Um, but our, our, um, uh, experience and, and, uh, looking at our outcomes, uh, we really, um, feel that, uh, positioning, uh, working with other emergency services to complement not coming from the same, um, stations is, is really the preferred model overall that we, that we, uh, uh, have built into our long-term facility plan.
Great. Yeah, no, I do thank you for your answer. And, uh, maybe we can further this conversation offline, uh, at least as an interim solution until these, uh, full-time buildings come online. Cause I, I do think it will increase, uh, public safety when it comes to, uh, medical response times.
We would be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Harvey. Uh, Counselor Jim Harris?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Lehman. And through you to, um, Mr. Wilcox. Thanks, Mr. Wilcox, for the presentation. Um, first, let me say, I, I can imagine, uh, it's, uh, very challenging, uh, to kind of manage corporate performance when you've got multiple municipalities all wanting varied, dear resources and a list of things that the county operates, um, community services, uh, social housing, uh, paramedic services are really important services. So everybody certainly, I'm sure, wants their share. With that note, I'm just kind of wondering if you could help for those who are watching and for council. How, how does, um, the county, um, ensure, um, municipalities who are paying in get value? Is, is, I'm sure it's not easy, but how, how would you, you know, you know, equate or show for residents of Barry that the value they get for their portion of, of the contribution to the county services?
Thank you very much, counselor, and, and thanks for the recognition of, uh, the varied service that we, we do provide. Uh, it's, it's almost like managing six or seven different business units all at the same time. Um, so, uh, it, from a corporate performance standpoint, we have an annual, uh, report that we provide to council that does outline the, uh, impact of each service. And, uh, of course, we, we compare to budget. We compare to, uh, other services and we compare to ourselves. So we're really looking at year-over-year comparison in terms of metrics within those services. Uh, so as an example, in paramedic services, we look at the weighted average cost of a vehicle hour as an example, and we compare that across comparable municipalities. Uh, within the housing corporation, we've been looking at the cost per unit, uh, each year and what the net impact is. And I can tell you that we've been trending below inflation for the last five years. So we look at those factors and we do, uh, we do a report every year. It's an annual report. It's, um, I can't, I'm sorry, it's probably provided within your package that may come from the county. Your, your four representatives, uh, would receive that report, uh, as part of the committee, the whole. Um, but, uh, but those are the ways that we do it. And then there's also, uh, much more internal reporting. Um, each general manager could probably outline, uh, a number of reports that are provided, uh, specifically looking at the whole service. It's not looking at specific, you know, uh, regions or one municipality versus another. We're operating vast majority. These are regional service. So we're trying to provide a value across the region as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So is it self-right? Yeah, I see the value across the regions. So the challenge would be as relates to Barry specifically. For a resident to understand the value to Barry is challenging to, to be really, um, kind of, uh, teased out. Is that fair to say?
True. And, and that's why we try and provide some of those metrics that we were, we're discussing in terms of what is the Barry or city-specific call volume? The city-specific number of units of housing? Um, we also, uh, will look at, uh, what the, the, the spend is in, within different areas. But, um, you know, social housing as well. We, we have a, uh, affordable housing, um, 10-year plan. And every municipality has a goal within that plan. So that helps to make sure that all of the, uh, areas are covered in terms of the needs across the, the region.
Right. Thank, yeah, thank you. And thanks for mentioning the, the social housing. I know that there's, um, the 2016, 20, we received our, you know, kind of summary of the, uh, major facility construction, uh, in the various areas, one being social housing. And noting that, and I know, I understand, you know, I've heard from others, when you change the year, you change the goalposts and therefore it looks different. But if, just what was in front of us, I, I financed, I financed the corporate services meeting. Most recently, the social housing projects for 2016, 20 would have, uh, had 9.8% of the money going to, uh, the project's going to Barry. Now positively, we know that 2021, 2025, 30% of the projects will be going to Barry. So for that, we're grateful. So my, my question would be, you know, obviously, you have these needs, as, as you've noted, Barry's in a, in a housing crisis amongst the most expensive places to rent, most difficult places, um, to move from, uh, from homeless to housed. from, from homeless to housed in, in certainly probably Canada. So I'm wondering how you weight that out as, as there's a county need for social housing, but there may be a real critical need in the largest community in county? And how do we move that 9.8% investment from 2016, 20 into 30% for 2021 to 2025 to a higher percentage, given what would appear to be, or what metrics, or what measurements, or what calculations would you use to say, listen, County of Simcoe, the real need is here in Berry? And it's, and here's how, how we need to address this.
Thank you, councillor. I'll begin, and I think General Manager Bishop can weigh in on this one. But we have had a concerted effort trying to find housing within, for this development within the city of Berry for a number of years. It's just a challenging, it was a challenging real estate market, but we managed to find that OPP station that was surplus and, and now we're going to be able to utilize that. So that, that thankfully is something that we've been able to focus on. But I think Mr. Bishop can talk specifically about across the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. And thanks for the question. Just to further that, a lot of it is depending upon timing and, and opportunity. And certainly it's very true that there have been several developments created through the Simcoe County Housing Corporation since 2016. I think the last Simcoe County Housing Corporation addition was on the Brook Street location. And that was 54 units that opened in, in late 2015. And, and so it does take time, certainly through construction when there is opportunity and, and certainly council approval to move forward on those. But we certainly are looking forward to the opportunity now that there is a, a location and, and a property that's been purchased in Berry. I would just note too, along the 10-year Affordable and Housing and Homelessness Prevention Strategy, there are a number of mechanisms that can be utilized to achieve units. They include rent supplements, housing allowances, homeownership down payment assistance, secondary suites, of course, and, and, and then as you mentioned, the rental capital development. There are targets set out and arguably there's certainly a growing need and probably a greater need than the targets that were set out in 2014. But significant progress is being made towards that original county-wide target of 2685. We're at 91%, and we'll continue certainly to look at opportunities and, and certainly through the support of the federal and provincial governments too. Because a lot of the, the opportunities do come from programs that have come through multi-year funding over the years as well. I hope that's helpful, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox, and thank you, Mr. Bishop. Yeah, and, you know, we would be doing our jobs if we weren't pushing for housing for Berry, given the crisis. And I don't want to take too much steam from Mayor Lehman, who has actually started a task force to deal with affordable housing, and other councillors are on this and greatly concerned and passionate about this effort. But yeah, I, I think it's, it's critical for our city. So I thank you for entertaining my questions. And I know, I know you do a lot of work. I, I know that very clearly. So I thank you for that. But definitely, you know, our, our city is in a crisis and I think it's important. And hopefully we can be prioritized with respect to all the other communities I know that have their needs as well. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Harris. Are there other questions for the county? I just had a couple, one following up on councillor Harvey's, I think excellent point. And it's not a conversation that we've really had at Human Services Committee at the county yet, which is around maximizing that opportunity on the OPP lands. I do, I do think, you know, we are watching the built form in Berry change. There's a 900-unit four-tower complex that will be happening on the other side of Bayfield Street, very, very close to this location, of course, it's a private development, but it is purpose-built rental. And although that site is larger, it, it's a, I appreciate the councillor Harvey's remarks and thoughts. And I think that maximizing the opportunity that we've got, given how hard it has been to find a property in Berry, especially at that location, it might be worth a look to see if we can provide more units onsite and notwithstanding the, the office uses and service provision there. That might be another reason why this is a good location for, for an even more ambitious approach. But I know that conversation can yet happen. My specific question, so that was my comment, my specific question was around long-term care. And Mr. Sinclair, I wonder if you could provide some clarity on, so first of all, the, the simple or straight-up question I had was just how many residents of Berry do we currently have in the county's long-term care facilities?
Thank you very much for that question. We had budgeted for approximately 19. We did, and we actually budget for a certain number, just to refresh our, how we establish the, the cost-sharing approach. And, but then we, we bill based on actuals. So it did dip into about 15. And then we've adjusted it upward again to what we had forecasted for 2021. And, you know, I think we saw a bit of a dip in the number of residents related to the pandemic and some bed holding that we've been doing in, in not only our long-term care homes, but across the province related to COVID, keeping a number of beds vacant as part of our strategy for isolation and containment should, should we experience an outbreak. So we anticipate that will increase back to what we had projected for 2021.
Okay. And that's across the county's four long-term care campuses, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But I would note, just with the redevelopment of our home in Beaton, we will be expanding the number of long-term care beds. So it's currently operating at 126. We have been approved for an additional 34. So it will be a larger facility. It will be 160 when we reopen with that facility.
Okay. And the, if somebody from Berry is seeking a space in a county-run, a long-term care facility, what's the wait like right now? Or is there a wait?
There absolutely is a wait, and it's a significant wait. It can range anywhere from a year and a half to two years, really depending, and it, depending on whether they're seeking basic accommodation or preferred accommodation. But it, we continue to have lengthy wait lists, not only at our long-term care homes, but again, not, not only across the region, across the province, there's a huge need for more beds.
Yeah, of course. And so, and how many county beds in total in the four campuses?
We have 544. We did open three additional beds in our Penetang machine this year. And then, as I mentioned, we will be expanding with an additional 34 with our redevelopment.
So with 500 some odd beds in the system, but only 19 Berry residents, is there a reason why there's such low utilization of the county's system for, by Berry residents? I mean, we're, we're about a third of the population in the county.
I would suggest that a location is, a location of the long-term care homes may be a factor, albeit there is no restriction. So all long-term care homes are required to admit applicants from anywhere in the province. However, that, that may be a, a factor in, in the number of Berry residents that locate in our long-term care homes.
Just because they're too far away from family and, and their support networks, I, I suppose, and it's not their home community.
That certainly may be a consideration.
Okay. Does the county have, is the county looking at the potential to expand into Berry at any point in the future?
This is where I get in trouble. Right now.
Fair point, Trevor.
We have a significant redevelopment project underway, and that's really our, our planning in the, in the, you know, near horizon at this point in time. And, and that is significant, as I mentioned, not only expanding the number of beds, but that campus development will include seven different types of seniors housing. It is significant redevelopment. It includes affordable housing, a whole array of different types of housing specifically for seniors. So we really anticipate it, it will help support the needs for housing and, and hopefully take some pressure off the long-term care wait lists because of other options available with services onsite.
Absolutely. So last question, county often gets asked by hospitals for capital funding. And, you know, we certainly, that happens to the separated cities as well. The University Health Network in Toronto recently made a decision a couple of years ago, I think it's been slowed down by COVID, to, to actually get into the provision of housing because of the need to move, provide alternatives for alternate level of care patients that were basically stuck in hospital beds, but could be, in some cases, better cared for in a long-term care environment or another housed type of housing. Has the county ever approached any of the hospitals in Simcoe County about the potential to partner on either long-term care beds on their campus or through a partnership in the community?
Thank you for that question. As a matter of fact, I met with the, all the hospital CAOs today. We have an ongoing partnership and we do meet regularly around the capital support and, and other types of planning. And, and I will tell you, we've had some significant success in exactly what you're describing around working with the hospital to find housing and supports so that they're not in a hospital in ASC. And, and, and I'll give you the example, working in Mr. Bishop's area with some domiciliary care housing. We partnered with the Royal Victoria Hospital and Community Mental Health to transition patients from the hospital into appropriate housing with additional support so that they could get into their home quicker. So we, we have had, and we've worked closely with other communities, but the city of Aurelia as well. So we have had those discussions and those partnership opportunities. I think the Ontario Health Teams are probably a really good opportunity to, to talk about those needs and, and opportunities. But, you know, we, we welcome future opportunities to partner to see how we can work together with the success that we had in that example that I described for you.
Yeah, absolutely. Certainly the, the post-discharge work, the, you know, the deeper it goes, the more, you know, that's, that, that's one of the best ways to create hospital capacity is to assist the hospitals as a community in supporting people. So they don't need to stay longer than they, they need to, and they don't end up having to go back. And I know community paramedicine has been a huge part of that effort at the county. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Thank you both for answering all the questions and presenting all the information. We certainly value the partnership with the, with the county. Notwithstanding, there's a great deal of pressure and you're hearing it from members of council in terms of the housing crisis in Berry, which is at an all-time high and, and the need for broader human services in the community. We, we, we do appreciate that work that, that we do together to, to benefit our residents. So thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. This brings us, members of city council, to inquiries. Deputy Mayor Ward, do you have any inquiries of staff?
I do not.
Members of council, any inquiries of staff? I just want to know from Mr. Frye if it will actually stop snowing. That would be okay. I'm just kidding, Dave. You don't actually need to answer that. But thank you if you have any information for council.
It looks like it's clear tomorrow and hopefully there'll be no squalls. So fingers.
Good stuff. We're going to hold your department accountable, just so you know. Any announcements, members of council? Deputy Mayor Ward.
I do have one. And I just wanted to, as Chair of the Market Task Force, I wanted to thank the 2,124 people that took the time to answer our questionnaire. I'm blown away by that many people answering the questionnaire, taking the time. And I, we just got the results today and I'm still going through them. But I just wanted to highlight two things. And that's, one is that we had a list, we asked people what they wanted to see in the market, what they wanted to buy, or what services they wanted in the market. We gave them quite a long list of things like vegetables and fruit and butcher and baked goods. And then we asked if they had anything else they wanted to see. And there was 208 suggestions of things they wanted to see in the market, which is quite astounding. And the second last question in, in the questionnaire was saying, if you've been to another market, either in Canada or around the world, what kind of things that you made it memorable that you'd want to see in a Berry market? We had 1,033 responses to that, suggestions of things to, that they wanted to see in the market, things that we hadn't thought of. There are things they'd seen in places like Barcelona and places like this, and, you know, we can have this in Berry. So I'm just, the task force will be meeting on Wednesday, we'll be discussing the survey. But I think the most important number is that 2,124 that answered, and the overwhelming number of them were in favor of the market. So thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Deputy Mayor Ward. It's been fascinating to watch, even the comments that have, you know, the threads on social media when that survey is mentioned or when the project is mentioned, and just the overwhelming support and interest, but that people took their time to suggest the additions shows the, the level of engagement we have in the community around this, this project, which is, is very exciting. So thanks for that. Councillor Congal.
Thank you through, through you, Mayor Lehman. For residents of Ward Three and beyond, if you like, I'm going to do Walk With Me Wednesdays. So for the next four Wednesdays, from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., I will be at the Georgian Mall at the lower level and just getting some, a health and wellness walk-in. And welcome residents of Ward Three to take that opportunity to also kind of connect with me if you haven't. And wanted to again thank them all for creating that inaccessible and welcoming space. And I think that's it for my announcement. Are you talking about the flag raising on Thursday, Mayor Lehman? Okay, thank you. So just a reminder, we've spoken before here, but we do have a flag raising happening on Thursday at 1:00. Please join me by the flagpoles. And this is around raising attention to violence against women and children and reminding you to please show your support. Our Berry Women and Children Shelter is selling purple scarves and ties and welcomes individuals online or at the flag raising to, to support this initiative. And Thursday, I believe, also starts on the 25th, sorry, I dove my notes in front of me, starts the 16 Days of Action. So please do find out more information through the Berry Women and Children Shelter and through the Women's Advocacy Council of Simcoe County.
Thanks very much, Councillor Congal. Any other announcements, members of council? Okay, I've seen none. I have actually surprisingly few. Already announced the winter maintenance event. So a reminder, please don't park on the street overnight. Tonight, I would like to proclaim November 23rd to December 1st as HIV/AIDS Testing Awareness Week in the city of Berry and as well World AIDS Day. Members of the public are invited to share their input on the draft master plan concept for Heritage Park, which is the 7.3-acre waterfront park. Interesting, didn't know this. The address for Heritage Park is 5 Simcoe Street. Who knew? It is, in fact, that big park right on the waterfront opposite downtown. And the next meeting on that is November 25th from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. But there's lots of information on our website. It's at buildingberry.ca/heritagepark if you'd like to see the concepts of the future of Heritage Park. The city Berry and the Public Art Committee are inviting proposals for local artists or artist team for digitally designed mural for Eastview Arena. This is part of councillor Ripma's community project in Ward One. Great opportunity for a new piece of public art in the city to brighten up the wall of Eastview Arena. The deadline for submission is coming up fast, November 30th at 3:00 p.m. Details of the project and submission requirements can be found at berry.ca-publicart. We're also accepting nominations for the 2021 Heritage Awards to recognize property owners and individuals who have made strides fostering local identity through heritage preservation and awareness within Berry. Nominations will be accepted until this Friday, the 26th. Information's on the website at berry.ca/berryheritageawards. We do have the overnight parking restrictions tonight, and of course, they go into effect for the balance of the winter on December 1st. Berry Police Service has launched its 2021 Community Safety Survey, a survey that is open until December 17th at berrypolice.ca/survey. Finally, nominations are open for the 2021 Berry Mayor's Innovation Awards. That's our initiative to celebrate and recognize the most creative solutions from businesses, individuals and community groups in the city. Residents and non-residents are encouraged to nominate a deserving business organization or individual at investberry.ca/innovationawards. Nominations until December 19th on that one. Tomorrow night, we have City Building Committee at 6:30, just briefly, because there are very, very few items on that, just some. Tomorrow night, we have City Building Committee at 6:30, just briefly, because there are very, very few items on that, just some advisory committee reports. And then we have Planning Committee at 7:00 o'clock for a public meeting on a couple of major development proposals, of course. General Committee will meet next on Monday, November 29th for the 2022 Business Plan and Budget Deliberations. That is the budget meeting next, Monday night at 7:00. The bylaws, Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills. And these bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bills 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, and 100.
It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills. And these bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bills 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, and Bill 100. Comments or questions on the bylaws? Okay, seeing none. I'll call the question. Those in favor? Nobody's opposed. They carry.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill. And this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 101. Confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill. And the bill, this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 101, the confirmation bylaw. Comments or questions? Seeing none. Those in favor? Anyone opposed? None. That carries can have a motion to adjourn. Councillor Natalie Harris, seconded by councillor Gary Harvey. Thank you all very much. City council is adjourned, and we'll see you tomorrow night for city building.